We'll also use other grocery outlets as part of the same trip, which could benefit other retailers they sell. The county, the Co-op, sorry, as a competitor to Aldi, they say, you'll hear from both of those, but they suggest that they object on the basis of their own interests and seek to preserve their monopoly. Again, that's a view that you'll consider later on. The county councils and the local flood authority raise no objections. There have been a number of letters and emails from local residents, six from Stapleford, two from Bramcut. They consider that the Aldi proposal would be beneficial for the area. There's an email received from councillor McGrath, who is supportive of this proposal in all ways. In terms of the details of the planning application, it is for a, in two parts, for a Class A1 food store of 1,254 square metres, but it is also, the second part of the application is for outline planning permission for housing with all matters reserved, with the exception of access, which is proposed to be from Pinfold Lane. The site is located 260 metres from Stapleford district centre, and in 2040, the predecessor to this committee, the Development Control Committee at the time, resolved to grant planning permission for a total of 50 dwellings on this site, which was subject to a section 106 agreement. In terms of the number of consultations and the number of issues in relation to this application, the scheme is satisfactory on a number of grounds in the view of your officers. The area which is at most contention here is the issue of the retail impact and its effect on the centre of Stapleford. There are two main plans to policy. It needs to pass a sequential assessment, which in simple terms means that we as officers and ultimately you as a committee need to be satisfied that there are no sequentially preferable sites. As mentioned, the site is 160 metres away from the centre of Stapleford, but that is classed as an edge of centre location. If the committee did consider there were sequentially preferable sites, then that would be a reason to refuse planning permission. In the view of your officers, there are no sequentially preferable sites, and that's a view shared by the independent analysis we had undertaken of this application. The other aspect of retail policy is that of the impact on the centre of Stapleford, and that starts in particular from pages 29, 30 and 31 of the report. On page 30, there is a table included in your papers that summarises the different opinions of those involved in commenting on this application. Turley Associates on behalf of Aldi suggests that the trade diversion would be 8%. The retail consultants on behalf of the Co-op suggest that that trade diversion would be 21%. And the council's own independent appraisal suggests that the trade diversion would be 50%. The retail policy test that the committee will have to come to a view on is whether the impact on the centre of Stapleford would amount to a significantly adverse impact. There's clearly a difference of opinion on that issue. Your officers' view, having looked in detail at the independent appraisal that we've had done, is looking at the arguments of both the applicants and others. We consider the proposed store would have a significant adverse impact on vitality and viability at Stapleford district centre. This specifically is due to the trade diversion away from the Co-op store and the potential loss of this anchor store and the detrimental impact this will have on the overall district centre. National policy states that where an application for retail is likely to have a significant adverse impact on the town centre's vitality and viability, then it should be refused. And our recommendation is that it is refused for that reason. In terms of other issues, with regard to the food store, we consider in other aspects the scheme is acceptable. Another point to draw the committee's attention to is that if approved, this application would result in a significant reduction in the previously supported residential proposals on the site. Although the residential element is in outline form, our expectation is that that would lead to the construction of 10 dwellings, a reduction of 40 dwellings from the previously approved scheme. Our view is that although a reduction in housing land supply in sustainable urban locations such as this is unfortunate, it is not considered that this alone is sufficient to justify a refusal of planning permission. In the event of members being content with both the residential and retail elements of the application in front of us, in terms of section 106 contributions, the applicant has offered to fund the installation at real-time information of the nearest bus stop in a southbound direction, in line with the comments of the county council, and they're agreeable to a £5,000 contribution towards this initiative. In the event of members being content with the application, that would need to be the subject of a subsequent section 106 agreement. So for those reasons, the recommendation in front of you is that the retail food store is refused planning permission on the grounds of conflict with national and adopted development plan policy seeking to protect the district centre of Stapleford. The residential element of the proposal is recommended to be granted permission, subject to section 106, in the event of more than the expected 10 dwellings being constructed. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. We have four speakers on this item. I'd like Mr Andy Thompson, the planning manager for the Co-op Central and East End region, to come forward and speak. You have three minutes, Mrs Thompson.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. We object to the proposed Aldi due to its impact on the health of the district centre. You will be well aware that your planning policy seeks to protect and enhance the health of such centres. Given the size, location and range of goods we sell, the Co-op is the anchor supermarket for the district centre, highlighted by the council's independent retail experts. Combined with the Iceland, Sainsbury's Local and the Middle discount supermarket on Station Road, there is already a good choice of food shops for the local area. Our store performs a valuable role in serving the shopping needs of the local community, including a free home delivery service for less mobile people, with over 100 deliveries made per week. Our customers also visit other shops and services in the district centre. Our store is already struggling, however, with turnover below expected levels. For this reason, we released our actual trading figures to the council's independent experts to allow an accurate assessment of the impact of the Aldi to be made. We believe the impact upon the turnover our store will be 21%. Combined with the current poor trading performance, this will turn the store into a loss maker and is likely to result in its closure. The council's independent experts reach a similar conclusion on the scale of the impact and the consequences for our store. They concluded that the resulting impact upon the district centre as a whole would be a significantly adverse one, contrary to national and local planning policy, and we support their conclusions. We therefore request that the committee follows their officers' recommendation and refuse this permission. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Thompson. Our next speaker is Mr MJ Bradley, who's supporting the application. If you'd like to come forward, Mr Bradley, and again, you get three minutes to speak.
I hope that's the correct way to address him today. Members, good evening everyone. My name is Mr Bradley, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the Aldi application for a new store in Stapleford. The addition of a new Aldi store would be a very good thing, and is long overdue. We have nothing like a large store to serve the vast amount of people who live between the Roach and Bramcut. I understand the Co-op are against this application, even though they have two shops pretty close together. Let's look at these big stores. Sanulator, one Little, one Co-op, very close together, no problems. Long Eaton, Asker, Aldi, Tesco, all close together, no problem. Beeston, Co-op, Little, Tesco, Sainsbury's, pretty close together, all no problem. I believe the Co-op do not have a case to oppose this application. The Aldi store will create jobs for Stapleford and stop many Stapleford shoppers going into every one borough, not Brockstoke to shop. So bringing them back to Stapleford, me included, I hope there will be a free vote for this application. Remember Del Boy, you know it makes sense. Thank you.
Our third speaker, and I may get your name wrong, I apologise in advance, Mr Glenn Stidiver from Aldi. If you'd like to come forward, and again, you get three minutes.
Good evening, Chairman and councillors, I'm Glenn Stidiver, property director for Aldi within the Nottingham area. We've been looking for a site in Stapleford for the past five years to complement our local stores in Long Eaton and Ilkiston. We've identified a substantial requirement for additional food retail provision within the town. Our scheme has clearly found favour with the local community, with overwhelming support being registered, and I'd like to thank them for their support today. Stapleford appears to be one of the last few remaining towns within Nottingham city to have such limited choice and competition, resulting in unprecedented leakage to towns such as Beeston, Long Eaton and Ilkiston. We've identified an edge of centre site only 260 metres from the town centre that will deliver a well-designed, high-quality store, accessible on foot and by all transport modes. The application provides the added benefit of land residential development. The local regeneration benefits of this scheme are therefore substantial. However, I'm hugely disappointed that we are now facing a reason for a recommendation for refusal concerning the potential retail impact. This issue boils down to an objection by a single occupier, the Co-op, who suggests that our store could result in the closure of their store. Unfortunately, your officers and advisers have chosen to ignore the clear counter-evidence which was presented to date. The Co-op frequently objects to any retailer schemes that may compete with its existing stores. They are purely trying to protect their market share and profitability. The Co-op is currently in the process of selling all of their large to medium-sized stores, whilst the business restructures to focus on convenience retail. The Co-op have recently built a second store within Stapleford, so you would assume they were happy with the performance of their first. The Co-op store is not performing as a main anchor store in the centre, particularly if its own evidence on store turnover is to be believed. This is not a store that is performing as a main food shopping centre for local people. There are many examples where the Co-op and Aldi trade successfully, in close proximity, with each benefiting from the different respective retail offers, such as Long Eaton and Ilkiston locally. And even if this Co-op store was to close, which we consider to be highly unlikely, it would not result in significant harm to Stapleford town centre. The centre is performing well with recent investment. I would urge you therefore to consider these points carefully before making your decision. Please also consider the consequences of Aldi's investment not taking place, the opportunity for 40 new jobs lost, a potential long-term derelict site, and unsustainable local shopping patterns due to the lack of food store provision within Stapleford. The benefits of the Aldi store far outweigh any disadvantages, and I would therefore respectfully request you overturn the officers' recommendation and permit this application. Thank you for listening.
Our last speaker is councillor Adam Stockwell, the ward councillor, and he'll get five minutes, I don't think, can he?
Thank you, Chair, and fellow members, for allowing me to speak. I've come this evening to speak in favour of the application brought for us, for you, by Aldi to build a new store on the old Pinfold business estate. I support this application as it is what Stapleford needs. Stapleford needs an Aldi, so there is a wider choice for shoppers and local residents, so we can actually have a greater impact on what we can buy, as there's very little choice now. Many residents has told me how they already shop around the different stores, going from Co-op to more discount shops such as Bargain Bites, which is directly opposite the current main store in Stapleford, so I'm not quite sure where the disagreement will come from on that issue. I understand that having Aldi in Stapleford would have an impact, of course it would, to suggest otherwise would be a problem. However, I disagree with the fact that it would be so dramatic as what has already been placed before us by Aldi, as there's already a second store in Stapleford, as has been mentioned previously, so surely it must prove that Stapleford, or that the Co-op in Stapleford is performing well, as they've gone and opened a brand-new store very recently. I have also had vast complaints from residents at the idea that this would be rejected because of the Co-op performing poorly. I know of residents who have told me that they walk from near the new site, the new site of the Co-op, and they still walk the full length of the town to get to other stores due to the prices of the Co-op, as they deem it unacceptable to pay that sort of money for what they receive. I also support this application that is laid out in front of us, as it will bring more people into the town and bring people who have left the town back. Numerous people have contacted me over the weekend in support of this and divorce, and many have said that they have left Stapleford as their main shopping destination due to the poor shops. All of those people have turned around to me and have said that they would be inclined to come back and do their main shopping in Stapleford if Aldi was granted the line admission, as it's a wider choice and they can use that alongside other stores such as the Co-op. Not to mention there's overwhelming support by Red Local residents to give Aldi this application. I have also here a petition that has been raised by residents themselves, with over 800 signatures, all in favour of this application. Not to mention the constant stream of emails that I've had very recently over this issue alone, the small emails I receive. There's also, there's also been no opposition been made to me by residents or anyone who is against the store after visiting local businesses, other than the Co-op we are discussing about now. I've also spoken to various members of the Stapleford town team, who are all in favour of this application, so such a group of small businesses who are all in favour of an application surely must show that we should accept this application as we see it here for us tonight. One of the biggest successes that we've had recently, as I will mention, is the Chavellish's Vintage Tea Rooms, which in the space of seven months had moved to bigger premises due to the success that was being pulled, due to the wonderful work that is being carried out by our town team. She has turned around to me and said that an Aldi would increase footfall in the town and will get people into her business and help her out even more. So I end now with a respectful request that you, this time, you go against the recommendation given by officers and that we do accept this application. Thank you.
In order to open the debate on this item, I will move it. Thank you. No, you can speak, councillor McGrath, you've got your hand up, I'm going to take you first.
Don't start counting, Meg, right. I've got, I have got quite a bit to say actually, but the gentleman that spoke on behalf of the Co-op said figures was given to an independent company, and I was just wondering if this independent company is Carter Jonas, that are actually selling properties or renting them out for the Co-op on Coley Road in Oxford, which means obviously they're not very independent if they're on the instructions of the cooperative in the borough areas actually working for them, and that just doesn't make it independent. Anyway. Page 23 of the agenda, 414, when considering edge of centre and access to proposals, preference should be given to accessible sites that are well-connected to the town centre. It's very accessible, there's bus routes, you can bike ride up there, you can walk, even me with my dodgy knee only takes five minutes to get from other end of Stapleford up to there, so that's all right. Page 25, 424, Stapleford is identified as being a centre in need of enhancement or to be underperforming. It states the main town centre users should be located in centres. If no suitable sites are available in centres, then edge of centre location should be used. And pages 28 and 29, and 6.4 down to 647, Stapleford former police station, checkers in, the warehouse, anyone from Stapleford knows it's the teller warehouse, Whitley Mill, all been looked at, not suitable, so there isn't anywhere suitable in the town centre. The next page, 435, policy S3 states that proposals for retail of more than 1,000 square metres floor space will be permitted outside the town centre, only if the availability for a site unsuitable in the town centre. Well, we've just said that. The site is within convenient walking distance, it is, and then you've got all these consultants, the Coal Authority, the County Council, Highways Authority, County Council Education, County Council Rights of Way, the council's Environment Health Officer, our own Roxton Borough Council Parks and Open Spaces Officer, Aero Wash Borough Council, all support the application for Aldi. Total number of representations that the council has received as of the date of this agenda was 270, 259 in support. I've got here, I hope my mic's not broken, I've got here, I'll pick them up or whatever, 59 letters of support I've had in the last three days from local residents that's emailed me, and I imagine they've emailed all you guys as well, which I think is amazing. And as councillor Stockwell said, the petition has been received, 825 people in support. So the town team, not one business, I'm a member of the Stapleford town team, not one business has contacted us against this, in fact they're all in support of it. I'm also a Stapleford town councillor, and I know the fellow Stapleford town councillors, they're all in support of this. Stapleford town council didn't put any objections in. As I said, there's only been six objections, one of them from the Co-op themselves. Page 28, 642, sequential assessment submitted by the applicant argues there are no other sites within sequentially preferable locations that are appropriate to accommodate the retail store size. We've already spoke about that, there isn't. And then page 29, 649, in order to independently scrutinise the sequential and impact assessments, the council commissioned a retail consultant to provide comments on the aspects of the application. Carter Jonas was selected, again, this is the same Carter Jonas that on the instructions of the cooperative states are either selling or renting out properties in other areas, so again, I don't see how that can be independent if they're actually taking money off the Co-op, it's just not independent. Oh, it's not going to take that long to talk. Stapleford, we need houses in Roxton, we all know that. The core strategy, which has been agreed, 6,150 houses are needed in the whole of the borough. Stapleford isn't the borough, Stapleford's part of it, there's 20 different areas in the borough. That works out at 307.5 houses per area. Stapleford has proposed proposals for the following, 49 on the Sim, like I said, these are proposals, 49 on the Simbat site, 450 for Field Farm, 500 for Landoff Toton Lane, which even though it's called Toton Proposals, is actually Stapleford South West, it's even on the council's website, 15 for Mulch Yard, Pinfold Lane, the Aldi, what we're talking about now, 10, Maycliff Hall 12, the former police station 7, three more at the back of there, Welsh Avenue 4, Church Street, just at the entrance to Kings Lane Park, 6, Midland Avenue 4, Whitley Mill, as we saw today when we was walking past, 24 on there, there's also talk of a possible 20 just off Bailey Street at the bottom end of Stapleford. That's 1,101 proposed new houses for Stapleford. That's a little bit more than 307.5 if you split it fairly. So where are these 1,101 families supposed to shop? We need this Aldi. Yeah, we don't want to get upset on this one, yeah, we really do need Aldi in Stapleford. Stapleford's a deprived area, lots of families can't feed their children properly because they just can't afford to buy the food, and having this Aldi will help these families to be able to feed their kids properly. I'm sorry, we really do need this Aldi in Stapleford, and that's all I've got to say on that.
Before we move on to the councillors.
Just a couple of points if I may. One is that the advice that we've got is independent, it's not, it's not an uncommon occurrence for a large company to have a number of different clients. They do have a duty to Roxton to provide independent advice, and the committee should treat the advice of Carter Jonas as being independent. The only other point I need to come back on is that whereby clearly it is Aldi applying for this proposal, the issue in front of the committee is for a discount food store that in all likelihood would be, but again, if the committee were to resolve planning permission, not suggesting that they would do this, but it would be available to them to sell on their interest to another retailer, as this committee is very well aware, you'll make planning decisions on land use planning grounds and not on the basis of whether it is one applicant or another.
Thank you. Councillor Philony has to speak first.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm not sure whether I should declare an interest in this application, because very regularly councillor Mrs Owen drags me around the Aldi store in Woolwell, and a pleasurable time is had by all, but I don't think that that means I can't speak on it. What I found most interesting is the comments of the local members, and to my mind, we should always very, very seriously listen to what the local members have to say. And the local members are saying quite clearly that this is an application that should be approved, and I've heard nothing tonight to go against that, nothing whatsoever. The policy on which the officers are making the point that it should be rejected is one of town centre preservation, town centre protection, and that's a policy that I think is quite reasonable. But what is in front of us tonight is not something designed to protect the town centre, which by all accounts is thriving, and I've had many a happy shopping experience at hyper over the years. Now, if you're really looking for bargains, that's the place to go. It's not, it's not designed to protect the town centre, it's designed to protect the Co-op. Now, the Co-op are perfectly, it's perfectly legitimate for them to try and protect their interests, but don't forget that if they perceive it as being in their interest, if it's not doing, the shop's not doing very well, they won't give Stapleford a second thought, they'll close the shop just like that. And you've only got to go around and see where they've done that. I, many years ago, came from Woolwell and they had, the Co-op had a big shop there, again, in a privileged position in the town centre with no competition, and my mother used to go, my late mother used to go on repeatedly about the high prices there, as soon as there was a bit of competition, they'd close, but Wilkinson's took it over, no problem. And if the Co-op closed the town centre shop, I have no doubt whatsoever, because of the strength and the viability and the robustness of the town centre, the rest of the town centre, none of whom, none of, none of the other businesses have said, we don't want Aldi, none of them, not one, only the Co-op. not one, only the co-op, because they would appear not to be able to compete, and that is not a planning argument. It's not a planning argument at all. If the co-op go, they go, and there will be a site there that somebody else will take over, because Stapleford is on the up. It's a good shopping centre at the moment, and it will move forward. Now, to talk about it being out of town, out of centre, well, we, as you know, walked this afternoon from the proposed site of the new Aldi to the town centre, and even I could make it not getting out of breath, and not only that, I could get back again without getting out of breath, you know, so it's not that far from the town centre, if I can do that, and clearly, if Aldi are opened, they will attract a lot of business and people will go into the town centre because they can park at Aldi, and then they will walk back again, and that can only be to the good of every other shop in Stapleford except the co-op. So I am minded not to accept the officer's recommendation tonight, I am minded to vote that we should support in principle the proposals being put forward by Aldi. I just have two minor things that I want to raise. The application includes ten houses at the moment, and that's fine, but I want to make sure that those houses are delivered. I don't want the application to be approved for the store and then the ten houses be conveniently forgotten. So I would ask Madam Chairman, if it is at all possible, to tie in any approval that this committee may subsequently give for the plant, for the store, for the delivery of those ten houses concurrently. I understand that that is possible, and I would like to see that done because I think it will ensure the best of both worlds. And the only other thing, and it may not be possible, as councillor McGrath has, sorry, McCrae has said, we do need, we've got to meet our alliance strategy targets. I think the car park is rather on the large side, I don't know whether the site could be slightly reconfigured with a few less car parking spaces, perhaps to get a few more houses on the site. I wouldn't want to say we're not going to approve the application on those grounds alone, obviously I wouldn't. Ten houses is better than none, and I would also bear in mind that we've had a windfall site recently on Higgin's Lane, we may be losing forty houses here, hopefully maybe a few less if we can, we're losing forty houses here as part of the alliance strategy, but on Higgin's Lane, there is going to be, I feel confident, certainly an application coming in for forty-eight units, forty-eight you said this afternoon, get it right, I went to the exhibition, you didn't, retirement living, retirement living properties, that's a windfall site, which more than makes up for any loss that we're going to have here. So I would urge the committee to reject the officer's advice and to support the application for Aldi.
Yeah, all I was going to say, this leads, that public speaking at council meetings, obviously applies to councils as well, and one of the things you can't talk about, it says it's unlikely to be relevant, competition from a rival commercial or business operation. This whole thing here is because of competition to the co-op, so we shouldn't even be discussing that, we should just be voting and saying yes to it, because there's no reason to say no to this, and that's on the council's own paperwork.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing us to speak on this item. It's obviously a site that's well known to us, and has been in serious terminal decline for a long, long time, as it's an industrial site due to a number of factors. But I also remember when the Little store on Walton Road was an application, that was out of town centre, and we faced really stiff opposition from local residents about allowing a little there, and now it trades independently and very successfully, not in competition, but complementary to other stores within the area. Now, I should try not to concentrate on the competition element, because, you know, we understand that the opportunity to kick the co-op is one that I may find irresistible later on when I speak, not least because, you know, a few months ago, when I opposed the co-op building a out-of-town store at Gilt Brook, and the impact that would have on local businesses, including my own town of Eastwood, nobody had got anything to say then, except that, oh, it wouldn't make any difference. But suddenly, you know, it's going to finish them in Stapleford. I find the hypocrisy really quite outstanding, and perhaps the development director of the co-op would like to write to me and just set out why this store, approving this store would damage the co-op in Stapleford terminally, and yet an application at Gilt Brook wouldn't take away the newsagents and local post office and other businesses, and the impact on Eastwood Town Centre, although it's a few yards further away, it's not a mile further away anyway, you know. So on the hypocrisy side of it, I find it really quite astonishing, but what we're all looking at here is the application to extend the town centre. This is an out-of-town centre site, and I consider it to be very much like the Beeston situation with Little, you know, in that, no matter how far you test them, bearing in mind through control, we look since nineteen ninety-five, the former chairman of this committee is here tonight, who was chair at the time, looked for a major food anchor within the Stapleford area, to retain shops, to retain business, to retain footfall, and to give people the opportunity for a variety of choice at prices that they can afford, without exporting trade continually to Longheat and to Stapleford, Sandacre and other areas. So Madam Mary, something, Madam Mary, something that we've looked at consistently for twenty years, and the sequential test proves that it is impossible to find a site location within the town centre. Therefore, any legalities regarding the objections to an out-of-town centre do not apply in this case to me. Having applied the sequential test, it means that the application cannot be accommodated within the existing town centre, there simply are no sites available. Now, that is not just simply planners' fault, you know, it's the way in which towns like our traditional town centres were built up, you know, including my own town of Eastwood, you know, it wasn't built for the flow of traffic and for cars, and you need some imagination and foresight into looking into the future, what future trends in shopping will be. Well, this time round, Madam Mary, this Christmas, you know, saw a ten percent increase in online shopping, and potentially the danger to losing further trade affects the viability of all the town centre shops, not just the co-op, not just the new Aldi, but also the tea shops, the cafes, the restaurants, the newsagents, the barbers, and all the ancillary trades. So it's always been our philosophy, you know, to look positively on these applications. And I do actually support the call for the houses to be built concurrent, I think councillor McRae was a very sensible suggestion, in that it is a good suggestion that the housing should be built concurrent to the planning application to ensure the application is fully built out. But I see no reason, there are no logical reasons for rejecting this application. I would like to see in the conditions though, that it is for, although it says Aldi, it wouldn't be, and I'm not questioning the integrity of the builders or the applicant whatsoever, but it wouldn't be the first time that I've been stabbed in the back by a developer in this council chamber who promised one thing and then sold it for another. So I'd like to see a condition that it is to a discount food operator, not necessarily an Aldi, but to a discount food operator, that the houses are built concurrently, and I say I see no reason whatsoever for refusing this application, it will at last give the people of Stapleford the opportunity to shop within their own town.
Thank you, Chair. It appears to me that this is quite an exciting development that clearly has brought a lot of people together, all members have been mobbing about this, I think I responded to everybody who's emailed, and I think it's so good in a wider sense, if you take away the business, it just shows the local democracy that actually it's not dead. I only wish this many people came to other council meetings, and perhaps there's a shade here as well to Aldi, if they want to come to Kimberley, might stir some interest there as well.
I think what's important to look at, I agree with what councillor Dooliver said about a reboot to online trade and how it can stimulate the economy locally, but there's a question about how we justify this deal, we've been asked to show exceptional circumstances, and should we not go with the recommendation? My question to Mr Storms is, what can we actually use to actually justify overturning this decision? And just another point, I agree totally with what councillor Owen said about the ten houses, but have we given any thought to, should we not go with the opposite decision? Where are those of the forty houses, Mike?
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Briggs.
All right. I come from Tilwell, and I travel along the Nottingham Road, I think it is, coming up to Stapleford, and I think to myself, what a draft place this is, over Starford, you know, really drag, and I thought, when I read this, and I went to see it today, I thought, this site, what a mess, and then I've read again the application and see that they're going to put shrubs and trees round it and make it quite pleasant, and I think that the people of Stapleford deserve something nice, they've not had much put into their town, and I think that they deserve something like this, where it's going to be nice, people can park, they can do their shopping, and then go into town if they so wish, so I will be supporting this application.
Thank you, Chair. There's a thing about actions speak louder than words, and I think those actions have been proven in the council chamber tonight for all the people that have come along here, and obviously they're very concerned about Stapleford, and they definitely want the best for it, and having gone to the site meeting this afternoon and had a look round, I would have thought the Aldi store would be very uplifting for Stapleford. Not only that, but it is going to give people the choice of where they want to shop, and there does seem to be a lack of that sort of supermarket shopping, and I have to say that Aldi's prices are very good, I'm not trying to do an advert for them, but I have to go and say about the co-op and Millen, I don't know whether you can read my mind, but what did I say to the Chair of this committee earlier tonight? How is it the co-op complaining about trade being taken from them when they can destroy too little outlets where we live? I've been, you know, I'm totally there with you with that one. The other thing is, we did talk about the housing, I would definitely like to see those ten houses come along at the same time, that would be another uplifting, and it would be a very nice thought for Stapleford. The only thing I have to say, and I do hope Mr Aldi, wherever you are, is going to listen to this, please, the car parking is mentioned. Now, I go to, or I did go to Aldi in Ilkiston, but I'm not going there anymore at the moment because the car parking is so small, it is people shuntering cars around, I've actually seen cars virtually, well, I have seen them banging and bumping into each other, and I do find that off-putting, so I would ask you, Mr Aldi, to look at this car parking and make sure that it, that actually it's not reduced, but it's going to be adequate for people to shop there, because that's, we want it to be successful, we want the people in Stapleford to have that choice. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ball, I'll take councillor Brinkley and then councillor McRae.
Thank you, Chair. I read this with, I know for my, I have no conclusion, one way or the other, I don't do the shopping in our house. The three points I want to raise are all on page twenty-seven. When I read this, and I did read it word for word, I was surprised when the co-op admitted to their shop is currently underperforming, I last put it in the Agenda. My first reaction then was, why on earth does a retailer that's underperforming open a same branch in the same town? And could that be one of the reasons why the shop in the main centre is quote-unquote underperforming? Because they've got a secondary shop on the edge of Stapleford's that branch. The other thing, I looked at two of the objections in five-eleven, Aldi is only motivated by their own profit, so is co-op, so is Tesco, so is any other retailer, they are there to make profit. But the one thing that really hurt me was, jobs created will be minimum wage, that is absolute rubbish. Aldi is no, not a sweatshop company. On the twenty-sixth of October last year, remember the day, it's my daughter's birthday, they put the whole of the supermarket chain in turmoil by saying from the February the first, their minimum wage will be eight pound forty per hour to anybody. The current national minimum wage is six pound seventy, if this development goes ahead in April, the minimum wage will be seven pound twenty, Aldi will be paying sixteen and a half percent more than the national minimum wage that was coming to effect in April, they'll be paying their staff eight pound forty per hour. Just Google Aldi wages and all that information will come up. We are not talking about a supermarket that's going to bring in minimum wage, treating less, I actually know a person who's a manager in an Aldi, miles away from me, so I've no influence on me whatsoever. This company has risen, in the old days it used to be large, Skoda used to be the laughing squad, it no longer is. Aldi have become a reputable supermarket chain in the whole country, and I will have no hesitation in supporting this application.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I, when I read these papers, shared surprisingly the same thoughts as councillor Dooliver, because it reminded me of the Gilt Brook application, where it was the other way around, and it was the co-op who wanted to apply to build on a site, and I recall sitting in this chamber and raising the very issue of the vitality and viability of the Gilt Brook and Eastwood shops, and specifically asked about measurements from the proposed store to the nearest shop, which was very similar to this, and was told that was clearly not a consideration, because as has all my colleagues pointed out, competition is not a planning consideration, and we hear that constantly in this chamber. And when I read this, my thought was, why are our officers recommending refusal when to me this is about competition, which is not a planning consideration? We've heard tonight from various council members who've indicated that they themselves travel out of our borough to shop at Aldi stores in Derbyshire because they want to go there, and presumably park up and then go and shop in other towns that isn't bringing income into our borough. What better to increase the vitality and the viability of Stapleford than to have on the edge of it a store that's potentially going to bring people back into our borough, back along the places they travel to in Derbyshire? That has to be a positive thing. We've had overwhelming amounts of emails from local residents, we've heard from local members tonight, and we are here democratically elected, and I always say when people come to me in my own town, I am elected to represent those people, and I certainly cannot ignore fellow councillors of all political persuasions and the residents who clearly want this. And I think councillor McCrae made a very good point, and I know from my own work, that we do have serious pockets of deprivation within Stapleford, and the co-op is not necessarily going to be able to cater for all those needs, and part of vitality and viability is surely to ensure that all people in our society can shop locally, and for that reason, I will not be supporting the officer's recommendation, and I overwhelmingly support the application support the application to build on this site. I agree with councillor Owen, I think it's a good point that he makes, that we do need to have the houses built concurrently, and we don't want to be left in a situation where the site's developed and those houses don't happen. So we need to ensure that any wording that is included ensures that everything is done at the same time. Thank you.
Do you have your councillors with you? Come, speak.
I'm going back to you, Stephen, before we go. Thank you. Just before the vote, there've been a number of points, I just want to make a couple of brief words in relation to the issues that you're very sure to be voting on. A number of members have said, quite rightly, that the issue of competition is not in itself a planning consideration, that is correct. The distinction here is that if an out of sound, an out of town or edge of centre is going to have a significantly adverse impact on a business that is in centre, then that significant adverse impact to a store will result in such impact on the centre as a whole, that is squarely part of national and local policy. So the fact that it is potentially the co-op that may be affected is not in itself an issue to either support or not this proposal. What is an issue that you need to keep in the forefront of your minds is the potential impact on that store on the basis that it is a in-centre store and on the basis of the impact that that may have on the centre of Stapleford as a whole. In terms of the criticism of business decisions that the co-op have taken, these are the opening of the stores, that again is squarely a matter for them. And in terms of the store of the Jaguar, former Jaguar pub site, that is a store that I should make clear, always was and is intended to cater for a local shopping need a significant distance away from the centre of Stapleford. So we should not let the existence of the co-op's commercial decision to open their premises on the former Jaguar pub be a reason to either support or reject the proposal in front of us. And again, I do reiterate the point that although quite obviously Aldi are the promoters of this particular proposal, what is in front of us is a food store. In the event of members supporting this proposal, it is available to members to require conditions or a section one oh six agreement is imposed to stipulate that that is a discount food operator, that is the basis on which Aldi have made this proposal. It's also available to members to request or instruct that a condition or a section one oh six agreement is imposed to require the housing to be developed at a similar or indeed an identical time as the Aldi premises that would be under construction. And those will be matters for you to take a vote on in the next few moments. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Right, in that case, we will move directly to the vote on the item before you. The recommendation is on page thirty-four, following that for the conditions before you. The recommendation is that the committee is asked to resolve that planning permission be refused to the retail shop, the conditions laid out before. All those in favour of the recommendation, please show. All those against, please show. Having rejected unanimously the recommendation for you, we have listened to what everybody said and we now need to vote to accept the proposal for the Aldi store with the provisions that councillor Radulovich and councillor Philip Owen suggested, that if it proves not to be Aldi, it is to be a discount food store and that the houses, as supported by other councillors, are built concurrently. And I ask that you vote to support, but with delegated powers, Stephen and myself, to do the actual wording for the support that you are giving this application. So...
I'm quite prepared to delegate to yourself and to Chair, but would it be possible for the opposition to at least see that before it's approved?
Right, all those in favour of supporting the proposed building, please show. And I think as councillor Radulovich has asked to see the wording, the old members will be circulated with the wording, all the acceptance. Obviously, if you have any difficulty, I think you need to get back to the presentation, but that's what we will do. Okay? Thank you very much. If those of you who've got support this application, they wish to leave, please do so. Or you can stay before the rest.